So we're gonna go ahead and get started because we have a packed agenda today on the council. So today is July nineteenth. It is now five thirty-three and we're gonna call to order the finance subcommittee meeting. I want to thank counselors Allen and Counselor Davila who are on the Finance Committee for joining us along with Counselor Gomez. And everyone from the offices of the city. So we will go ahead and get started. First item on the agenda, first two items are the Ask Me Collective bargaining agreements, local three zero six five and local one five nine six A. So Bill, I guess that would be you.
That's me. Good evening, counselors. How are you?
Doing okay. How are you, Bill?
Good, good. Thank you for taking the time to discuss these contracts. I do have good news from the representatives of Ask Me that they have ratified both of these agreements. The thirty-sixty-five is the foreman's union and they are about approximately thirty-four or so members in that group. They're the foreman that work for DPW in parks. They're like, they include lead arborists, working foremen, traffic signal technicians, recreation supervisors, et cetera. We started negotiations on September eighth, two thousand and twenty. Because of COVID, we went from being in person to these Zoom negotiations, which I haven't done until COVID started. We reached a TA or tentative agreement on May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. The unit, the union ratified the contract on June third, two thousand and twenty-one. The previous contract expired on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, so we're full year in. This is actually a series of two contracts. The first contract is for one year and it covers the period of July first, two thousand and twenty to June third, June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. And the second contract goes from July one, two thousand and twenty-one to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. The wage increases are two percent each year on July first for the four years. We addressed the dues deduction in agency fee language. There was a Supreme Court case called Janus, which has pretty much got rid of agency fees, which were very popular in union contracts here in Massachusetts. So we addressed that language. We clarified some working out of grade language. We addressed the new parental leave law in Massachusetts and got rid of some old language on maternity leave, which has been superseded by the parental leave. And then we upgraded a cement finishing crew four-person to a grade fifteen. So that's the, that's really the highs and lows of this contract. And we'd asked that the Finance Committee support it going into our ratification tonight with the City Council.
Do you know how much we would have to pay a back pay? Do you have that number?
Well, one percent is roughly seventeen thousand dollars or so, I think, on this contract. So you'd have about thirty-four thousand or so and change just on back pay. But my numbers may be a little bit outdated. I'm just using off a finance sheet, strike that off of a sheet that my office puts together. So it's probably in that, in that ballpark, but there's gonna be overtime.
You're talking about for both contracts?
No, no, I'm talking about for this contract. You've got one year at two percent plus, you know, the nineteen days of July, two thousand and twenty-one. So you've got a little bit over a year worth of back pay here.
Over a year, okay.
And Counselor Whitfield, we have those numbers for both the retro and then the increase for the FY twenty salaries for each department based on each of the contracts that are before you tonight. So we have those numbers.
Are you think you're gonna try to take that from reserves or?
Well, actually, yeah, actually, the strategy right now, considering it's July, we're not gonna be putting money into the departmental budgets right now. We're just gonna continue to monitor the budgets. If it comes to a point, probably after free cash is certified, where we see that the department's gonna be running a deficit, we will come to the City Council to move money in. But considering it's July, it just doesn't make sense to do that right now. So that's how we're gonna move forward with both of these for the department.
Just gonna monitor the budget and see where it lands, okay. Any questions from counselors on the?
I, I have one question, Tracey.
Sure.
Sorry, I'm driving, so I can't really.
That's okay. Just be safe.
So Bill, thanks for the info. How many people are, you mentioned all of these different foreman positions. How many people are in this, are affected by this contract?
It's approximately thirty-four, thirty-five. Again, that my numbers might be a little bit outdated, but that's the ballpark from my, from my sheet here.
Okay. So in effect, we're doing one year separate, just to catch up, and then a three-year contract from there on.
Right, so we negotiated both contracts at the same time. But yeah, that's, that's a good way of putting it, counselor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon to everybody. Lindsey, can you share those numbers, the retro and the fiscal years?
You're muted, Lindsey.
Yeah, I'll try to put them together. I have them. I'll just try to draft them in a memo before the seven o'clock tonight and I'll send it out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsey. Any other questions from counselors?
I'll set.
Okay, thank you. So Bill, did you, did you wanna address the fifteen ninety-six or you did? For those that can't see the agenda, that's another collective bargaining agreement with Ask Me, local fifteen ninety-six A.
Thank you. There, there are approximately fifty-one or so members in this bargaining unit. We started negotiating, this would include like children's librarians, reference librarians, branch supervisors at the, at the different branches. We started our negotiations on September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty. And again, it was one of these things where we were meeting in person and then we, COVID hits, we, we kinda had actually set up whole new ground rules and get ourselves into Zoom negotiations. And then we reached a tentative agreement on June second, two thousand and twenty-one. The union ratified in June eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one. The previous contract had expired on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. Again, this is a series of two contracts. The first contract is for one year and covers the period of July one, two thousand and twenty to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. And the second contract covers the period of July one, two thousand and twenty-one to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. The wage increases are two percent for each year for the, each of the four years falls on July first. We again addressed dues deductions and the Janus decision with the agency fees. We took care of that. We streamlined the grievance arbitration process. We clarified some open-ended language on grievance leave. We fixed the maternity leave parental leave issue that I discussed with the last contract. We reduced the religious leave day, days from five days to two days. We included a substitute staffing memorandum of understanding in this contract. What we had been doing with that was, we had been repeatedly just renewing it every six months or so or every year. And we just said, listen, this really just belongs in the contract and the parties agreed to that. And we upgraded the supervisor of our, our services and children's services supervisor to a grade nine point five from a grade eight. And I believe that was effective on July first of two thousand and twenty-one.
Any questions from counselors?
I have one.
Sure, Counselor Allen.
Thanks. I didn't ask you on the first one, Bill, but I'll ask it for both of them on this question. How is residency handled in these two tracks?
There hasn't been any change in the residency. It's still, it's still required. There was a date when we first brought it to the City Council. I can, if you wanna give me a second here, I can look it up, but it is required in both contracts.
All right, that's fine. That's enough, Bill.
Okay.
Just, just wanted to make sure. We usually bring it up. I just wanted to make sure.
Good question. Any other questions from counselors? All right, seeing none, we're gonna move on to, on number three, Springfield Library Foundation Staff Development Grant for ten thousand. Gina, are you gonna take this one?
Sure. This is, thank you, Counselor. Is, has become something of an annual gift from the Springfield Library Foundation to the city in order to fund staff attendance at conferences or register for professional development through webinars or whatever format they're taking nowadays. So this is at the same level as they've been funding us for the past few years.
Thank you. Any questions?
I'll set.
Seeing none. Another libraries Rose Smith Music Fund Grant for twelve thousand five hundred.
Yes, this is, I believe, the second, perhaps the third year that we've been receiving some funds through the Springfield Library Foundation from a benefit from a person named Rose Smith, who donated many years ago with the intent of amplifying music collections, music programming and so forth. And that is what this, the intention of this spending is and what we will use it for.
That's fantastic. I hope you bring that bucket drum class back. That was a lot of fun.
Yeah, a great collaboration with Community Music School, that was, yes.
Yeah, that was fun. Any questions on that?
No questions.
Thank you. DPW rideshare funding, forty-one thousand four hundred thirty-five dollars and forty cents.
Good evening, counselors. Chris Signoli. The money we're receiving tonight, it comes from the state. It's a tax that is placed on top of Uber and Lyft rides and where they originate in the state. Last year, we received almost ninety thousand, so I'm a little surprised that it's even forty thousand this year with everything the way that it was last year. This money kind of copied or gets merged with our Complete Streets money. We use it for sidewalk traffic, bike, bike share accommodations throughout the city. We are utilizing the eighty-seven that we received last year in our bidding now. And this will be done next spring for these funds.
Any questions from counselors?
No questions.
A quick question, Madam Chair. If I may.
Sure.
Good to see you, Chris. Chris, where does this go, money go to your department?
No, we will use it in kind of supplement money that we receive on our Complete Streets program. We'll be using it for sidewalk installation, bike lane accommodations, as well as traffic-related stuff throughout the city. It's not a huge amount. Forty thousand doesn't get us very far. We use it for supplementing our Complete Streets work. Excuse me.
All right, thank you, Chris.
Chris, does the sidewalk repairs and everything still go by that list you sent us? When you use this, these funds or does someone call for an emergency or?
Yeah, usually what we'll do is we'll supplement, even, even when we're doing chapter ninety work on roadways for paving, we'll supplement some of this money in Complete Streets money for sidewalk work. So a lot of the extra money that we get for sidewalk, most of the money we receive on a yearly basis is through the CDBG program. So we tend to target this work in non-CDBG areas in order to get some of that work on some of the outstanding sidewalk applications that we do have.
Thank you, Chris. Any other questions?
No questions.
All right, so we'll move on to order six, FY twenty-two Prevention and Early Childhood Services Grant, one hundred fifty-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, Health and Human Services.
Good afternoon, counselors. This is a grant that we have with the Square One. We are working with them on our young individuals' mental, physical and emotional health. So this is the first time we've really had a grant dealing with the issues related to early childhood. We're very pleased that Square One is partnering with us. We hope that this will be a grant that we will have for a number of years. But there is obviously this one year. I'm asking to you, accept the grant, please.
Okay. Commissioner, so is it for like grant slots for children, for staff? Do you know?
Yes, I do. Yes, we will be hiring an individual whose job it will be to connect with early childhood with Square One. So it will be staff, there will be travel, there will be all of the things that come with a grant. But yes, it will be for staff, but it will not be to pay for early childhood slots.
Okay, so more like a education-type role?
Yes, the individual will be working closely with Square One, doing education, health and wellness, not just with the, not just with the students, but with parents as well. So our goal really is to create a framework where we're working with our children around healthy eating, exercise, health and wellness, all of the things that we think are important to the childhood development.
All right, thank you, Ms. Commissioner. Any other questions?
I'll set.
Moving right along, order seven. Order Accepting Mass Gaming Commission Grant Contract Amendment for eight hundred twenty-one thousand one hundred sixty-nine thousand to reimburse Police Department for FY twenty-two cost of participation in gaming enforcement unit MGM, no match required.
Good evening, counselors. This is the annual commitment by the Gaming Commission to cover the cost of the Gaming Enforcement Unit, which exclusively patrols the casino on all three shifts, twenty-four hours a day. It covers salaries and fringe benefits, excuse me, education incentive pay, overtime and uniform clothing and equipment expenses.
All righty. Any questions on this grant?
No questions.
Counselor Davila?
Two quick questions. Good afternoon, Deputy.
Deputy Counselor.
How do, how many guys do we have on that detail?
We have six patrolmen and one lieutenant. And that's all by the agreement with the Gaming Commission when the, this whole casino was being planned out.
And that includes salary, overtime, and what else includes, you said?
It includes salaries, infringed benefits, education incentive for those officers that still receive it, overtime and uniform clothing and equipment expenses.
Deputy, I might be confusing the numbers here, but I recall that we recently approved something for having to do with this particular unit. Was there something, a recent grant that they received? Was this something you recall?
Counselor, the only grant that I'm aware of, and the only reason I'm aware of it is because I had it presented today, is the, is this gaming, this grant from the Gaming Commission. There may be other, well, you know what, strike that. You're right, Counselor, I'm sorry. There are other grants that come from the mitigation money that have been used to buy vehicles and other, other equipment for the Police Department. This one specifically relates to the personnel that are assigned there. But yes, there are other, other grants that have been used to buy equipment for the downtown metro area.
Okay, and this money was already built into the budget. So for some reason, this number sticks in my head.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
This number, this, this item was already built into the budget that we just passed. Because so for some reason, this number is sticking in my head. I remember having this conversation with somebody recently. Maybe that's what I'm thinking.
These, these numbers are not included in the budget. In fact, they were taken out of the budget because we knew we had a grant for it. So you may have seen an offset in the budget of this amount, and that's because we have this grant for the salaries of these officers.
Okay, so, all right, so basically, they have not received, they being the, the special detail. They have not received any other funding than this one.
These, this isn't, this isn't considered special detail. That's something else.
So what, what do we call the MGM?
This is a reimbursement for the police officers that patrol around the casino. And so this is not new. This money was negotiated when we were negotiating the casino coming in. And they said that they would pay for one lieutenant and six officers and everything that goes with that from the travel, from the overtime, from the salary and wages. They paid for these officers specifically to take care of the area around the casino. But there's other casino money that comes in overtime. Like last time, we talked about three grants that came in for different departments within the city. And the police did get one of them, but it wasn't for this specifically, so.
That's through the specific impact grant program, which is also under the Mass Gaming Commission.
So we get them all for different reasons. This particular one was already negotiated.
And so Deputy, what's official name of the, of the unit, so did I get it correctly?
Is the Gaming Enforcement Unit, excuse me.
Gaming Enforcement, okay. So, all right, thank you for your clarification. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions on this one? Okay, moving right along to order eight, the TJ O'Connor Veterinarian Technician One Grant, no match required, eighteen thousand nine hundred eighty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents.
Good afternoon, counselors. I will respond to this. Pam is not with us. The foundation, the TJO Foundation does pay for part of our veterinary services. And so that's what this grant is.
Pays for part of the technician. There's a technician too right under it, so I'm gonna say that it's probably for the same exact thing. It's twenty-seven thousand six hundred nineteen dollars and seventy-three cent.
That's correct, Counselor. Thank you.
You're welcome. And there's another one. For the veterinarian grant, it's forty-two thousand sixty-nine dollars.
Again, that is, I believe, to pay for the veterinarian. The foundation does pay for the veterinarian part-time or half of the salary.
Any questions from counselors on those three?
Oh, thanks.
All right. Just make sure I don't see anybody else. All right. We're on to eleven, and that's FY twenty-two Local Consumer Aid Grant for one hundred twelve thousand seven hundred twenty-seven dollars.
Thank you. I'll speak to this. I don't see Millie here. So this is for the operation of the Mayor's Office of Consumer Information. It's our annual allocation. It covers the salary and wages. It covers some OTPS for that department, some travel. I don't know if anyone has any questions. It's for fiscal year twenty-two.
OTPS is other than personal services, just for the edification of folks that don't know what OTPS may mean. So other than salary, pays for those costs. Any questions?
I have one quick question. Is that the, is that the own, does that cover the whole cost of that office or is there more city budget that would sort that?
It covers the whole cost. If something comes up throughout the year that they need funding for, we'll always apply that to them. But yes, this, this does cover the whole cost. We don't supplement anything going into the fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
All righty, order number twelve, the State nine-one-one Training Grant, two hundred fourteen thousand one hundred seventy-seven dollars and six cents.
Okay, that's gonna be me again, but hold on, let me just find it. I have a big binder this.
You got one right after it, too, the State nine-one-one Support and Incentive Grant for ninety-two thousand eight sixteen.
Okay, so this is obviously for dispatch. Again, this is our annual allocation that we will see from the state from dispatch. This is an anticipated award. We haven't received the award yet, but we wanted to get something on the books considering our next council meeting is until September. And this award represents a twenty-five thousand dollar increase over FY twenty-one. And it is specifically for training for the dispatchers. It's training and anything related to potential software expenditures, travel related to training and the salaries for people attending training.
Any questions, counselors?
No questions. Thank you.
Counselor Davila?
I have a question. What's the staff in that office? Do you know?
How many people are in there? Um, I can look it up. Hold on.
Yeah.
Like forty-five people in dispatchers?
They have fifty-four people. And currently, well, at the time of the budget publishing, they have about eight vacancies for dispatchers.
Okay. Okay, okay, thank you, Lindsey.
All right, and the next one is State nine-one-one Support and Incentive Grant for nine hundred ninety-two thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars.
Yes, thanks. Again, this is our annual allocation from the state. This goes towards the operating expenses for the department. So generally, it's used to offset expenses, but it can be put towards anything for operations of the dispatch center.
I guess I just missed the, the department that I heard the nine ninety-two, but what department does it go to?
Dispatch.
Dispatch, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, order fourteen, Tobacco Control Grant Program, one hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Thank you, counselors. This is our annual allocation for tobacco control. As you know, we have an individual who directs that department and we have staff. Their job is really to make sure we are not serving young individuals tobacco. So they go into the convenience stores and other places in the community to assure that they are following through with the age limit.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any questions?
What was the amount of the grant?
One hundred and forty thousand.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, order fifteen is the SSYI Grant Increase, six hundred sixty-two thousand three hundred forty-six dollars.
This is the Safe and Successful Youth Initiative Grant. I think the total amount is three million nine hundred and ninety-two, three hundred and forty-six. It is an increase of six hundred and sixty-two thousand three hundred and forty-six dollars from last year. On this grant, targets young persons between the ages of seventeen and twenty-four primarily, who are at high risk to commit or be victims of gun and gang violence. It is almost entirely an outreach grant. ROKA is our primary partner. The Police Department's role in this grant is simply to help identify at-risk young persons, both through police officers on the street as well as our crime analysis in our records bureau.
How much of this grant goes to the Police Department?
I don't have the numbers this year, Counselor, but I, I pulled last year's numbers. So last year, when the grant was, and I'm not a mathematician, somewhere around three million, three hundred thousand dollars. The total expenditures for the Police Department was fifty thousand dollars. And that was for a crime analyst, patrol officer, intelligent specialist, specialist, as well as the Budget Director and the Grants Administration.
Okay, well, since there's an increase, is all that gonna go to ROKA? Or are you going to try to select other organizations that may also be doing outreach?
I don't have an answer for that right now, Counselor. I don't have a breakdown of the way the monies are allocated. I know that. Um, I know that traditionally, ROKA is the primary partner, there are other secondary partners, or there were last year. Um, but again, I, I don't know how, how it's going to be laid out. It seems to me, from what I've read on this, that ROKA does the, the majority of the managing of the money, so.
And how many years of a grant is this, Lindsay?
This funding is for FY twenty-two.
Oh, this is specifically for FY twenty-two, but what's the total?
Melanie, do we know how many years this one grant is for? You're on mute. Sorry, it froze on me, of course, when I was trying to unmute. It, I believe it's a four or five-year contract, it's a state contract that accumulates year by year. So the award amount that we go to council for every fiscal year is the award amount, but it's still part of like a multi-year contract, so I believe five years.
Cause this says in, um, increase, that's why it seems like.
Yeah, because technically, cause technically, it's part of the state contract. So although we use it by fiscal year, it's technically part of the five-year contract that they're providing to us.
So this is just for this year, so it's not an increase to what they already got.
Correct.
Is their amount, their allocation for the year.
Right.
Okay, all right. Counselor Davla?
Thank you, my dear chair, you said the question I was gonna ask, but uh, so, we're gonna, this six hundred and sixty-two thousand, some change. Does it, the amount being increased, or the total for the FY twenty-two?
That's the increase over last year.
Increase, and so, would you be able to tell me what's the actual amount that we expect to get then, on a yearly basis, roughly?
This year for fiscal year, uh, twenty-two, it is three million nine hundred and ninety-two thousand three hundred and forty-six.
So Deputy, I got two que, two quick questions for you, sir. Uh, I do recall in all the past conversations, particularly in the budget uh hearings and um uh, uh, the budget meetings, uh, we asked about money being used for suppression and how the great, vast majority of the money was being used for suppression. I do recall you, sir, saying that uh, there was gonna be some money coming for prevention. Uh, is this one of the many, or is this it, particularly when it comes to prevent violence and guns?
This is, uh, I believe this is the largest one that I've seen.
Okay.
There's also Shannon money, uh, the Shannon grant money. Um, I believe seventy percent of that, and I don't have the amount of that award in front of me, but seventy percent of that is um, dedicated to outreach and prevention.
And I just have curiosity, uh, would you happen to know, or anybody on the call, what criteria is used by the city to distribute this money and to who this money goes to?
I don't know, um, I can only tell you that by looking at last year's award. Uh, that ROKA was the primary partner in this.
Who else?
I, I don't know who chooses them or who decides that.
Melanie or Lindsay? Do we know how we choose this, these nonprofits?
So these questions probably are best directed to Anthony Salvo. He's um, the city's administrator for the grant.
Okay, would you?
I know that. Correct.
At Salvation Army?
Yes. Is that wrong, Melanie? Or am I confusing this with Shannon? The lead is uh, on this particular grant, uh, ROKA. So there's a different, different organizations that are partners under SSYI. Some of them, uh, other than ROKA, we have clinical and support options, basic medical center. Mass hire Hampden County workforce, the county shares office, Hampden County shares office. So those are a few that we have. As for the selection process, I'm not aware, uh, cause that was part of the PD internal process, but we can certainly research that and provide that to you.
So I, I do have a request, would you guys be able, either Melanie or Lindsay, to provide me, one, a listing of the nonprofits that get specific violence prevention money? And two, who the contact person is to figure out what criteria is used. And the reason that I ask, because first, I wanna give a, a, a shout out and some kudos to uh SPD. I was reading today that uh, we get a hundred and twenty guns off the street this year. And just to put them to perspective, that's illegal guns, uh, to put that into perspective, that's about three guns a week. Um, that are taken off on the streets here. And so with the new changes that the commission has made, uh, eliminated narcotics units and created into a special gun unit. Uh, I think perhaps this is the time to really relook at our approach. And re-bamper approach, so that we can better control the gun violence here in the city. Uh, and so I do look forward to get that information uh, from uh, from you.
Counselor, can you, can you, um, again, reiterate what exactly you're looking for?
Well, uh, who's the contact person that we need to talk to, to figure out what criteria is used to the money allocation for the nonprofits? And two, to who have we given money before? Um, what nonprofits throughout the city? Uh, for any money, for whatever source that might be, that has to do with gun violence, gun prevention, violence prevention uh, in the past.
Okay, so there's more grants specific to gun violence and gun prevention than just SSYI?
Yep.
So are you looking for all of that?
Yes.
Is it more than SSYI and Shannon, because you gave us both of these grants before?
We also have uh, the CIT Hope Grant that works with the Behavioral Health Network. So we could provide with those, if those are what you're looking for as well.
Thank you, very kind.
Cause I know that we recently just got these two.
Correct, right.
So if you could just resend that information.
Okay, yes, thank you. Just to complete my, 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 my turn, uh, Deputy Kent, uh, congratulations on uh, kudos to the department for the guns of this.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, counselor. Yes, Deputy Kent, I echo those sentiments.
Thank you.
Definitely deserve it. Um, okay. You had a question, Counselor Allen?
I couldn't hear everything, but I'm sorry. I mean, I heard some of Counselor Davla's questions, yeah. Um, I think it would help all of us, cause this always comes up with Shannon and SSYI. Every year, year in and year out, we have the same questions. Uh, it would be good if there was a page, you know, a little document to describe Shannon and SSYI. And who got what, and what each is for, and then we could refer to that. Uh, we, we had that meeting with the youth center directors who got Shannon money a few months ago. I thought it was a really good meeting, there were really good answers for what there was, but uh, every year, we, we get into the same questioning.
And I spoke to ROKA, Counselor Allen. Um, I went and met with them specifically about SSYI grant. And I'm gonna invite them on, just like we did for um, the Shannon grant. Um, I'm gonna schedule a meeting around SSYI, but they did send this information. And what it does, and the amount that they get to us when they sent us the Shannon grant information, so we do have this. But Lindsay says she will send it again.
All right, great. The other question that comes to mind with me is Brother Johnny, who gets the money out of the uh equity, racial equity department. Which, I don't know, I don't know how, how that relates to this. I know that's an outreach thing, and trying to identify people on the street. You know, catch them before, maybe before they get in trouble or whatever. But it would be nice to know how that worked with this as well. Um, and, and uh, because that's new money, that's only the second year of that money. Maybe that helps, I, I don't know, I've just, that's a question that comes to my mind.
So Counselor Allen, I'm happy to give you, I get a report from the mission on a monthly basis with their data. And so I will make sure that we are sending that over to the council. I don't know that there is an interconnected relationship with the other grants, I would have to ask that question.
I know missions does get a portion of um, of um, not SSYI, it's the other one. Shannon, they get a portion of Shannon. He, he was gonna make it to that meeting too, but he said he didn't get the link, and when I texted him, the meeting was almost over. But he did join toward the end, and I don't know if he stayed on to the end, um, Counselor Allen.
Yeah, great. Yeah, it'd just be good to understand, because we have more money in this area than we used to have. We, we only had Shannon, I think, when I started. That's the why I came along, and now the racial equity money. The numbers are bigger, and uh, you know, I'm just hoping that, that as you said, Helen, you're not sure it's connected, and that that's fine. It's just worth asking the question and seeing, oh, you know, how they all line up with each other.
I think that's an excellent question, and I will certainly reach out to the mission. Um, and I heard Counselor Whitfield say that um, they are also involved in the Shannon grant. So I don't know if there's some relationship between all of the individuals and organizations that we're funding. Because it would appear that there should be um, some interconnected uh, relationships between those receiving money from the city. So I will check, Counselor Allen, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, Counselor, all set? Okay.
Thank you.
We got to move to these next items, um, really quickly, because public speak-out is at six-thirty, and we do have five individuals. And um, so it's gonna be one question, if you have one, and that's it. Um, DPW Shared Streets and Space Program, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand?
Counselors, this is the third uh, grant that we've received through the state. Uh, as far as COVID money from the state under their shared streets program. Um, the first one, James Avenue, the second one was Worthington Street, this one is Main Street and Indian Orchard. We will be doing sidewalk bump-outs, uh, parking modifications between Pine Vale Street and Oak Street in the downtown area. Uh, the application can put together with DPW and with Counselor Ramos.
Perfect, any questions? Great, order seventeen, Springfield Library Foundation, Foundation Trust and Endowments Grant, one hundred and eighty thousand.
Uh, hi again, and forgive me, I didn't even introduce myself last time, Jean Cano Salvano in for Molly Fogarty. I'm the deputy director at the library, pardon me. Okay.
Um, go ahead, um, Jean.
Okay. Yes, this is, again, the Springfield Library Foundation is um, uh, turning over the library's proceeds from some different funds uh, for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. They uh, intend to um, have that fund um, just our materials budget. So uh, books and magazines and music and so forth, um, that you find on their shelves.
Uh, and you, um, you have a question, Counselor Allen? Counselor Allen?
I thought he had said no question, but.
Oh, I thought he said he had a question. Oh, I'm sorry, he could've said no question, but we're moving on, because we have to. Um, DPW Complete Streets Tier Three Construction Program Grant, one hundred ninety-two thousand five hundred.
Good evening, counselors, again, this is our third award through Mass, uh, the state of Massachusetts. Um, totaling, this now totals about eight hundred dollars. Uh, this program is for two specific locations, bike and pedestrian enhancements along Trachten Road in Springfield. And bike and pedestrian enhancements along Bay Street and Tapley Street in Springfield.
Any questions? All right, um, order nineteen, Parks EEA Green City Trees Grant Increase, two hundred and thirty thousand.
That's me.
Okay.
Um, so this grant is an increase of two hundred and thirty thousand totaling one point seven-nine million for the Green City Trees Program. And it's a program with the goal of planting twenty-six hundred trees throughout McKnight, Olds Hill, and Upper Hill neighborhoods to increase tree cover.
Self-explanatory, any questions? All right, see you in none.
No question.
FY twenty-two Mason Square Library Grant, one hundred forty-five thousand three hundred and ninety-three dollars.
Hello, um, this is again, um, coming to us through the Springfield Library Foundation. Uh, and it is in support of operating expenses, not only for the Mason Square branch, but other library branches as well.
The salaries included in that?
Yes, it's to support personnel.
Strictly to support personnel?
Uh, that's my understanding, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, any questions?
No question.
May Revenue Versus Expenditure Report, order twenty-one.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield, uh, Patrick Byrne, City Controller. Tonight you have the May Revenue Versus Expenditure Report, as I mentioned last week. Or, sorry, last month, we are projecting a fifteen million dollar surplus in our school transportation account. And this will be our starting point when we do the free cash calculation. So we're uh, working hard now, with the new year started, and uh, working on closing out fiscal year twenty-one.
That's a good free cash amount, Pat. We're gonna have to ask for some of that to use.
I was telling everyone, I remember when it was negative thirty-seven million one year, so.
Wow, that's great, yep, alrighty, any questions from council?
No, that sounds good.
Starting point, too, when will you know, Pat?
Uh, we, we're hoping to submit mid-October and hopefully have it certified uh, by November, December timeframe.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, twenty-two, the FY twenty-two LSTA At The Table Grant, ten thousand dollars, no match required.
Uh, this time, we'll change it up, this is coming to us from the Mass Board of Library Commissioners, they are federal funds. Uh, so, uh, between those two things, it's, it's still considered provisional, but we can accept it. Um, should it be voted uh, that way tonight? Um, provisional in that a contract has to be sent out by the state. And the funding isn't available to be spent until October first on the federal fiscal year. And this would be to start up a program around food, cooking. Um, local food ways, healthy food growing and healthy eating. And a lot of programming and training that we'll be offering through this grant.
That's fantastic, I love that your libraries have healthy food options, and you could just go if you live in the community and click. Um, so that's great. Number twenty-three, order granting permanent utility easement to N-Star EverSource at four fifteen Main Street. Nobody here for that one. Okay, we'll move on to order twenty-four, order authorizing contract over three years for the school department.
I can speak to this one, um, someone will be here tonight from the school department, I believe, or actually from the law department. Um, so this is just a request for the school department to award a contract over three years for copying and printing.
Copy and printing, okay, any questions? No, okay, and then the community.
No question.
So, thank you, Community Preservation Committee FY twenty-two budget.
This is a small adjustment to their allocations for the budget, they do this every year, based on the difference between the estimate versus the actual.
Okay. Any questions? Alrighty, and the FY twenty-two Shine Grant First Quarter, twenty-four thousand nine nine nine.
Good afternoon again, this is uh, for the Department of Elder Affairs, the uh, serving uh, health needs of elders. It's the program that we counsel uh, elders around as far as their um, health insurance is concerned. health insurance is concerned.
Alright. Any questions or comments on that? Alright, that's great. Um, do we want to accept the financial orders as presented, or I know we didn't hear from anyone on item order twenty-three, so we can exclude that one? Tim or Victor? Yeah, Victor, cause you're like in and out.
Sorry, I had, I was on mute. I make a motion that we accept the orders as presented.
Except for twenty-three. Thank you, counselor. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Second.
Okay. Okay, so orders will, except number twenty-three will be accepted as presented, and we are going to end this meeting. Any, any motion? Where, I'm making a motion. I'm second in the motion, and no, so. Go ahead, Victor.
Make your motion to adjourn.
Tim, second?
Make the motion to adjourn.
Alright. Meeting, I, all in favor, say aye? Alright. Aye. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Sorry to rush through the end.